Thanks for finding that.
Good afternoon, this is Luke Revan, Assistant Manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as online moderator for this special session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the Board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township website on May 7th, consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is currently visible on your screen. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by Chairman Skribner before speaking. To be recognized, you must first ask the moderator of this webinar to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before posing their question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Skribner.
Thank you. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors work session remotely for Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, 5:00 p.m. Tonight's agenda, and just a reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting. We're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
Yes, we can.
Injustice for all. Sorry, it's kind of hard when you can't.
Right, I should have anticipated the need to project an image of a flag.
Okay, public comment for non-agenda items and a reminder of rules for public comment. Established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted for each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. An additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. And now I'll ask Luke if there is anybody in the audience that would have any non-agenda items to talk about.
There is no one.
Okay. Well, business, so we're going to go ahead and start turning it over to Kristen for the Employee Handbook Draft Review and Discussion.
Okay, so Michael Gailey drafted this. It's his original document. It was then circulated to various staff as well as managers, assistant manager, and chief of police. And we then compiled their comments and/or concerns and brought it back to you. Ken reviewed it and had provided me a couple of comments. The chief and Scott reviewed this version again and provided me comments today. So I'm just going to go through, highlight the sections that I think need discussion item on or policy decision to be made on. And then if anyone, if Jason or Kyle, you had any concerns along the way, you know, chronologically stopped me and I'm happy to go back. So the first section 103, employee classification. This was right now, and Luke assisted me greatly in helping me understand what employees you have and what their hours are. So right now, as far as your health insurance is concerned, anybody that works 30 or more hours is provided healthcare. And that's where we kept the distinction between regular full-time and regular part-time as if you have 30 hours or more, you're considered full-time. I know Ken had a comment about that and thought that it should be, you have to be working 40 hours. The way it's set up now, your employees work nine to five with a one-hour lunch break. And so they technically are working 35 hours. But as far as why we left it in this section 103 as being full-time being 30 or more and part-time being less than 30, it's mainly because that's what the cutoff is in terms of being eligible for healthcare. So we can change that. It's just that that, and I don't know where it's documented. Luke, maybe you can help me on that, or Scott, where it's documented that you have to be working 30 or more to be eligible for healthcare. But that, I did speak to Michael Gailey about that and you guys can determine, you know, what number of hours it is that you want to have them be provided healthcare.
Well, I'll go first here. It kind of depends on, well, I'll start with, I think the way we define full-time or part-time is the Board's discretion. I think it's important to note that different benefits have different thresholds of eligibility. So for example, our pension plan describes a class of people who are eligible to receive a pension. And that threshold is people who ordinarily work 35 hours or more. So there's one vote, so to speak, for saying 35 is the threshold. Alternatively, the Affordable Care Act sets the eligibility for our health insurance at 30 hours. Likewise, our long-term disability and life insurance thresholds are set at 30. So I think the language that appears in your draft right now sets the distinction at 30. But we'd have to bear in mind, if we actually hired somebody at 30, even though they would be considered full-time, they wouldn't be eligible for the pension plan because that's set at 35. So we have this kind of weird gap between 30 and 35 where we want to keep any new hires out of that range.
Well, I would ask Kristen, is there a way to put in this paragraph at the discretion of the Board?
I don't think you should do that. I think that the purpose of this is to establish and give to a prospective employee or newly hired employee, you know, what are the rules? So I'm just going back to my notes from Michael. He indicated that basically you just need to check your benefit policy. And does the benefit provider only allow benefits to be paid to employees who work 30 hours or more? Because he doesn't, it's really, I don't think he felt that the Affordable Care Act had a, what was defining whether, when you choose to give health benefits to somebody.
So you're saying that we would trump the Affordable Care Act?
He was telling, what, according to Michael Gailey, you guys get to determine at what level of hours somebody's working before you provide them health insurance. And it depends upon what your health insurance policy currently today says. I don't know where you get your health insurance from and what it says as far as when you went out and bought it. Who did you say were the eligible employees that were going to be provided with that coverage? That's what I think we need to check on.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's additional information we need to pull in that. The primary issue I have here with this is the regular full-time is at 35 and the regular part-time suggests less than 30. So there is that gap. And I agree that the primary point of this document is to eliminate the discretionary items, so it's clear. My experience in the private sector has been, you know, typically 35 hours or more is that threshold for that. That's just been my experience there, but you know, it sounds like we need to identify that information from our carrier in order to fully close on this one.
So Ken, are you okay, if Luke were to approach or Scott were to approach our care provider and they were to say 35 is okay, would you be okay with accepting both of them to be considered 35?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so Luke.
Yeah, personally, that would be my preference, to be honest.
Well, I think we have an additional complication in health insurance. And let me kind of amend an earlier statement I made about the Affordable Care Act and its threshold for 30. You could say 30 is the threshold at which they expect you to offer that to employees. And if you do not, you may be subject to the penalties described in the Affordable Care Act. So it isn't necessarily you must, it's just that there may be a consequence if you don't. I think that the whole moral of the story from an administrative perspective is we wouldn't hire anybody, or we wouldn't recommend that the Board hire anybody in the whole range between 30 and 35 because there's a host of issues related to that. So for all intents and purposes, if there's a gap, it's because no one should work between 30 and 35. They should either work 35 and up or 29 and down.
The only issue is in our, I'm sorry, the only issue is in our, the only, the primary issue I have here in our definition section here of classes is let's say something slips through the cracks. And you know, the intention is this is to be a policy and document that carries for a while, right? And let's say three years from now, something slips through and someone's got some weird scenario that is, they do 33 hours a week, right? They technically are not a defined employee at this point now by our own policies. That's the primary concern I have.
Yeah, I'm with you too, Ken. I say, you know, Luke, to put this one to bed, why don't we just make it 35 on both unless there's an issue with the provider? And if there is an issue with the provider, then we'll revisit this. But for at least getting one question answered that we can possibly, you know, get this thing in motion.
I like the answer 35 and there, with all due respect, there's no research that I can do with the provider that's going to distinguish eligibility. Because I'll just use as an example, you as Board members who don't have compensated time here in excess of 30 or 35 hours are eligible to participate. So you could think of some benefits as describing a class of employees that are qualified for the benefit. That would be those benefits like the pension or like long-term disability or like the accidental death and dismemberment. They're eligible because they match a class of employees that is a definition that is in its own, independent of what we adopt in the manual. That is not the case with health insurance. They will sell us health insurance to whoever we have completed an application.
All right, well then let's put it at 35 if we ever need to adjust it.
Agreed.
Okay, done, done. All right, next thing was, I'm sorry, I'm moving down, scrolling down.
Kristen, if I can interrupt your train of thought, one other thing, just so we're absolutely clear, when you do get a draft that you will have as an option you can vote on, the chief has amended the last sentence of 102 to recommend that it refers to the Police Department Policy Manual instead of Handbook. Your semantics.
East Township Police Department Policy Manual.
I'm just erring on the side of letting the Board know every single thing that will be different about the document in front of them today versus the 21st.
Okay, that's done. Let me scroll down then to the next.
Per my notes, the next thing for discussion was on page 11, section 212.
Lunch break.
Right, right. So currently now, Luke indicated that everybody is working a 35-hour week and they're taking a one-hour lunch break. And they're not being paid for that one-hour lunch break. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so that's just a policy decision. I mean, the chief did chime in on that today. And his comment was that, that he doesn't think that a half an hour is long enough because most employees have to get in the car or most employees do leave the building to go to lunch and that it may take longer than 30 minutes to go get your lunch, eat it, and come back. So his suggestion, again, it's a decision for the Board, is that you are going to change it. It should be 45 minutes provided for lunch and 15 minutes provided for a break. But again, the law is, what the law, I want to go back to what Michael Gailey said. I think you need to give them 30, if they work eight hours, you need to give them 30 minutes. You do not need to pay them for that.
So you're saying right now, 35 hours plus lunch break is not paid for, that's not the norm though, correct?
No, I don't think, I think.
No, no, I mean, is that, are we only doing the 35 hours now because of the time with the COVID or is that standard?
That's the way it's been for years, Kyle.
Okay, okay.
Right, everybody who works 35 is salaried. So if you were to look at my timesheet, it would say that I work 35 hours a week. I assure you, I work more than 35 hours a week, but that's what gets recorded. We're salaried.
And then reality, this issue is.
Go ahead, sorry.
Are there, the issue, I mean, the issue with this comes into play, I mean, typically speaking in a salaried model anyway, it's, you know, you're, it's typically you're not tracking it by the minute, right? This issue typically arises with hourly time card, you know, punch and punch out, right? So again, if they're not paid, they're not paid. And you know, I have to go off my experience again in the private sector here. In an eight-hour workday, typically, we afforded a 30-minute lunch to 15 minutes. You know, you had folks that would, you know, pad that 15, those two 15s on the lunch hour, per se. You know, so I think this comes down to, you know, the goal here is ensuring, are we getting a full productive workday?
Yeah, I'm okay with the half hour, 15, 15, if you want to use the 15 and pad it onto your lunch break and make it a full hour, I'm fine with that. But again, this would be more something that you guys would have to monitor in the workplace. That's not something that the Board of Supervisors is going to see on a daily operation. So if you feel as though somebody's taking too many breaks on top of an hour lunch, I think that it needs to be addressed.
Well, so just so I understand your position, Ken, you're suggesting that the lunch break be amended to a half an hour and then the employees would leave at 4:30? Or they would have a half hour and leave at 5:00?
The hours, you know, barring sort of shifting of time based off of what folks work, because I know the public works folks come in a little bit early. It would be the eight-hour workday with a half-hour lunch break and two 15-minute breaks, you know, in there. However staff utilized that or management sees fit to manage effective performance for the day would be there. So I think at the end of the day, a lot of this as far as non-work time is still coming out to be the same. It's a matter of the department heads managing their staff appropriately. If that makes, if that makes sense, if I was straight enough there.
Right, you still envision the employees working a 35-hour week nominally from nine to five with an hour break total?
Yeah, I guess the math comes out to be the same.
Okay, I don't know of any, I mean, I know that there are, there are many organizations I've been at where, you know, you would, you have 15-minute breaks and the like. We certainly don't have a tradition of mid-day breaks here. So basically, the only time you wouldn't see an employee at their desk is during the lunch hour.
So is there a law that says that you have to offer 15-minute breaks during the course of the day? Or can you just do the lunch and be done with it? I mean, I think we're splitting hairs over this, to be honest with you. If it's an hour lunch and they have a half-hour lunch and two 15-minute breaks, it's still an hour if people choose to do it that way. Is there a law, Kristen, that states you have to have breaks throughout?
No, no.
Let's just reword it that we have a half an hour lunch with two 15-minute breaks or an hour lunch, however the employee sees fit to take.
I guess the question is, do you want to, does the Board care enough to say you can only take 30 minutes at a time for your lunch? And at other parts of the day, you're permitted to take two more 15-minute breaks? Or are you okay if they take the full hour all consecutively?
Yeah, I'm fine with them taking the whole hour consecutively. If you're going to offer the half an hour and two 15-minute breaks anyway, it's still an hour anyway you slice it. So if that seems like the way it's been getting done, I don't have a problem with it. Rather than wording it that you're going to take breaks now that are going to be mandatory else you don't get paid for them.
My perspective is that you're putting more on staff or management to try to figure out who's going where, when. It seems easier to just keep it if at the end of the day, you're comfortable with them not being, basically paying them for seven hours, not paying them for one full hour and you don't really care, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but if you don't care when they're taking that hour, whether it be 15 minutes in the morning, 30 minutes at lunch, and 15 minutes later, or all one hour at lunch, I would just keep it as the way it is.
Yep, I'm okay with that. Ken?
Ken, is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, no objections here.
Okay. Okay, Kristen, you're back on.
Okay, moving down. So the last one was, the next one was 214. Ken wanted, he asked the question of whether employees are permitted to smoke outside. Right now, there is no standard policy that prohibits it. The chief did comment that as far as his department is concerned, it's a no-smoking department. And he would support if the Board wanted to make, you know, a statement that there will be no smoking anywhere on Township-owned property or at least on the Township campus.
I mean, that falls right back into that, if somebody wants to have a cigarette every 20 minutes, that's a problem. If they want to utilize that in their half an hour window of breaks, then I'm fine with that. But I don't have a problem with that. I, that's just me.
I think this should be designated.
So we could add, we could add, right now, it says smoking is not permitted in any municipal building. We could just add a sentence that employees, if employees intend to smoke, they must smoke in a designated area outside of the municipal building, something like that.
Yeah, and we can have a, I mean, you're going to have public works area and then you're going to have the township proper building. So I would say you designate the public outside, well, that's even a question mark because you got fuel down there. So I think it'd have to be discussed on where you're going to put your public work smoking spot and then the other, the other building outside of the North X or something.
Is there, well, is there, is there state guidance? I know in the city of Philadelphia, they have this, as far as space from the, as far as designated space, space away from entrances. And then the other thought is similar to, I think, the police policy. I just think that it should at least also clarify, not in the building, but also not in township vehicles as well.
Right. So we would put, how about we do this, how about you put in there, Kristen, at a location, a location for public works to be determined by the public works, by the, you know, by Matt. And then in the township building, a designated spot to be addressed by the township manager.
Yeah, or you could even leave it more general, just say in a designated area. And then you guys can, you know, Scott or Matt can determine where that designated area is for their department.
Okay.
So the strict prohibitions are on inside equipment and inside township buildings?
Correct.
It's allowed in designated areas?
Correct.
That's clear enough. I appreciate that.
Scott sent something over later in the day. I didn't have a chance to look at it and see it, where it needed to fit in. But basically, reference to Resolution 96 of 09 that references federal CBP guidelines. Scott, is that relating to the use of alcohol and drugs while using equipment?
That's correct. It's basically, it was the start of the CDL process.
So I'll try to merge that in, whether it comes under section 215 or I'll have to see where it fits, but I will reference that. Because that also could come under 216, use of township vehicles and equipment. So I'll meld that in. Yeah, and then also 217 deals with CDL licenses. So I'll look at that resolution to figure out the best place to put it.
I think.
Scrolling down. Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, I think that the end result would be that the material that Scott sent you, which I appreciate, I wasn't aware of, is going to be in addition to the existing language in 215. Because the resolution is applicable to those who drive, who need equipment with CDL licenses. It describes a testing regimen and the sanctions for failing.
Right, and my goal would be probably not to cut and paste the entire resolution, but just make reference to it and then attach it.
We have an example of that elsewhere with the disability.
Yeah. Ken had a comment on 229, and I added that the roadmaster has to provide to the Board of Supervisors on a monthly report the record of the monthly fuel use, so I added that. That was something that Ken had pointed out. Uh, let's see.
If you've gone to 229, I'd like to rewind to 214. Kristen, you and I had a conversation on this and I see it, it didn't, it didn't change from the draft you and I discussed. And it has, I'm sorry, not 214, 226, which is political activity. We have a current employee who is an elected member of a council with jurisdiction outside of East Brandywine. This policy would prohibit the employee from holding this office. I'll just point this out. My recommendation is that they should be prohibited holding office with jurisdiction over or constituents within East Brandywine Township.
So the question is whether the Board wants to change 226 to not prohibit an employee from holding a political office in another jurisdiction? Or for any jurisdiction for that matter.
Yeah, you know, I wouldn't even have this opinion if you weren't going to make a current employee illegal, so to speak.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I don't, I'm not sure you should do that either, but that's a policy decision. I mean, I think people have the right to be citizens, you know, be, I don't know how it can click. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, what's the, what's the?
It could be in their own community.
What's the intention of this, of this section? It would seem like this would bar someone's rights. I mean, their employment's, I'm not familiar with the laws on this one or what necessarily we're trying to get at with this particular policy. And to your point, Luke, you have somebody that's already falling into that, which seems, you know, problematic.
I would, well, so here's the thing. I think that there's good parts of this and I think there's bad parts. I think an employee who's voicing negative political opinions out loud and influencing others with this decision is a problem. But I don't, I don't have, in fact, second-class township code allows political parties to be supervisors can be on, say, road crew or they can be public works. So that, that doesn't make sense even against second-class township code. So maybe it's just part of this should come out.
Yeah, I was only thinking the middle sentence would come out. In 226, my only thought was that the middle sentence be deleted where it says however employee, yeah.
So we'll strike however employee may not be an officer of a political party. That just shouldn't even be an option. I mean, leave it, it's fine. And a whole political office while employed would also get struck.
Right. Do you want to strike for solicitor contributions or services from other township employee? I mean, that's.
I don't know. That was a tough one because you know in the, in the election world here that there's always people running for office that are contributing to other people's campaigns. And I think that they should have a right to do so. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think we just, I think we, you can't really penalize someone for trying to be, just because they work in East Brandywine doesn't mean they reside here. They should have the right to be active in their own communities. I think it was just, if it was up to me, I would just slash that whole section altogether. I don't really understand what the point is of it.
Well, like I was saying, the only, the only part that I thought should stay was the fact. was the fact that if someone is touting their, their political beliefs and, 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 you know, forcing their, their beliefs on another part, another person, then I think that, that's not proper. But other than that, that's the only thing I saw that I think should stay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
The first sentence is actually a protective right. It's actually telling employees, yeah, go ahead, you have the right to do that. So, it's actually making, it's reaffirming that they do have the right to do what you just said. So, I would, I would keep in the first sentence, for sure.
Yep. So, so let's, let's read this one out loud, and then we'll say, and, and Jason's here now, and Ken. Employees shall have the right to be members of and support the political party of their choosing, to vote as they choose, to express opinions privately on all political subjects and candidates, to maintain political neutrality, and to attend political meetings. And then I think we stop it there and go to employees are prohibited to voice negative political opinions about the township's employees with regards to matters of this nature. Employees should refer to the second-class township code.
I'll hear that.
Okay. So, I'm now.
Yep.
Um, Ken had a comment on section 230, inclement weather, and he made a good point that it's really up to the township manager and the board supervisors to determine whether or not employees would be excused from work in a state of emergency, that there may be some situations where either it's not warranted, or it shouldn't just be across the board will be excused. It says may be excused if deemed necessary by the township manager in consultation with the board supervisors. So, that's the change I made. Going down to, Ken had a comment on section page 25, under section 305, progressive discipline. It had mentioned that if somebody was sleeping during work hours, that that would be an example of conduct which would necessitate progressive discipline. He thought that that should come out. That should probably be somebody, you know, if somebody is sleeping during work, they could be fired for that. You also, Ken, you had also suggested that reporting to work under the influence of alcohol, drugs would be immediate dismissal. And I did not delete that, because I do have a concern that under the Americans with Disabilities Act, if somebody is an alcoholic, they are deemed to have a disability. There was, you know, in that circumstance, if they could claim that they were disabled, they would be entitled to seek the recovery they need, I believe. So, that, that was my only concern about striking it all together.
Where, what?
305.
I'm on page.
Okay.
305, I'm on page 25.
24.
Calling out.
Yeah, so my, yeah, so as, as far as the alcohol or drugs, I mean, obviously, there's lots of laws around that. So, obviously, whatever the, the laws are dictating. Of the list of items on here, though, the main one that jumped out to me is sleeping during work hours. Just seemed like it could be significant enough that, that, you know, optional for, for immediate termination if, if, if necessary, versus by policy having to follow the full rank of progressive discipline.
I agree. I saw, I had to have this.
Okay, so I will keep in reporting to work under influence of alcohol and drugs, and the other one goes out. Um, let's see. And Luke, stop me if I'm moving past something you thought we needed to talk about. Moving on.
I'm sorry, Kristen, real quick. So, I, I guess the only question is, we're, we're pulling it out of the progressive discipline section. However, then, and, and we're pulling it out because it's, it rises to the warrant of a significant issue. But I'm assuming then that at this point, then it's not actually documented anywhere else in this, in this policy, then? Because we're not labeling, we're not labeling items for immediate issues, or do we need to at that point?
Well, that, that would fall under dismissal, wouldn't it? The township may, manager may dismiss any employee at any time.
Well, and I also think you just have to read the beginning part of 305, that each incident is evaluated to determine level of seriousness, nature and number of previous disciplinary problems, impact on operations, and morale. Incidents of a more serious nature and with more significant impact may require immediate suspension. So, it's, this is not meant to cover every single thing that an employee would do. I think that preference language helps you to, you know, guide you on that you do have the right, if you believe the matter is serious enough, to immediately terminate them.
Okay.
Okay, if we're, if we're using that paradigm to understand this bulleted list, I, I'd recommend that we, we similarly strike the stealing, because to me, that's also an immediate termination.
Agreed.
Okay. Um. Moving on.
For my notes, the next comment item was 307, related to dismissal. It, it doesn't have a note next to it on the draft, but I recall, Kristen, you and I having a conversation about the authority to dismiss employees. I, I'll give you an idea of the precedent right now. If, if we were, if the reverse were happening and we were hiring, there'd be a committee who was tasked with conducting the search and making a recommendation for an appointment to the full board. And yet, when we flip it, we have just the authority for the, the manager to dismiss without the involvement of the board. And I, I think that's kind of a conversation on policy.
That was, I believe I forgot to put that in there. What I said was for violation of the terms of the employee handbook. And what I forgot was to include with the approval of the board of supervisors. I believe in the police department, there's a process they go through, but it's still the board that has to make that final decision. As far as termination of an employee.
Right. So, it, it just, by way of brainstorming on this topic, if, if, if I were working with a blank slate, my inclination would be that, that the manager should be able to suspend with pay immediately. So, we were kind of talking about the list of disciplinary actions, some of which we had a consensus on our immediate termination. I think if, if the manager were to just come across an employee engaging in that sort of behavior, stealing things or sleeping, the manager should have the authority to immediately say, go home pending investigation. But I think that the, the actual decision to terminate should include the board.
I, I agree. And you're talking about under 307?
Yes.
All right, yeah, I would agree with that, because who's not to say that a manager might not have a problem with the employee, and he could just fire him at will, and then the board wouldn't have a say in it. So, I would agree that it would should be exactly like Luke just said. And, you know, that there would be an investigation and determined by the board of supervisors.
Instead of dismissal.
Yeah, I'm just checking.
Right, right. Instead of dismissal.
Yeah, I would say instead of dismissal, suspension.
Correct.
Suspension for cause, something like that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the language in chapter. I'm looking in the language of chapter 43 of your code, and it specifically says, under 43-5D, powers and duties of the manager, that the manager shall, subject to concurrence of the board and all applicable statutes, rules, and regulations or collective bargaining agreements, hire, and when deemed necessary, suspend or discharge any employee under his supervision, provided, however, such hiring or discharge of department heads or appointees that require approval of the board. So, maybe we just copy that language.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jason and Ken, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. Yep.
I, I popped up an org chart. So, I just popped up an org chart. Basically, that, that, that's everyone except for the, the police chain of command. Just to give you an idea of, of Scott's direct supervision relationship with staff.
The police one's in there too, Luke.
Yeah, but, but the police, the police chief is not under Scott.
Oh, I got you. I know you, you're good. Okay.
All right, so are we good with cutting and pasing from the code then on that?
Yeah.
Luke, did you have anything else, any other section?
Um, my next note, I don't know, uh, I don't know what your next note is. My next note is the 400, and we just had a conversation about your preference to incorporate by reference and attach independent resolutions passed by the board. We, we kind of already touched on this as it relates to the, the alcohol policy for CDL drivers. In, in section 400, there's a reference to the short-term disability policy. It's clear to me, I didn't know if you were gonna incorporate it by reference or incorporate it in full text. And it looks like the preference is gonna be to incorporate it by reference.
Yeah, I mean, those policies, those resolutions, I just assume attach rather than, you know, but, I mean, you could even go one step further and make it more vanilla and just say, you know, the board has established a short-term dispo, disability policy, which can be obtained from the manager, something like that. I just don't want, there, there's two different ways, you know? This could be a document that you want to be able to hand to an employee and say, here it is. It contains everything, including resolutions that are impactful upon employees, and those resolutions are attached. I just, we just have to be careful that when new resolutions, if they're revised or new resolutions are adopted, that they get added to this policy.
Right. For the record, if, if the board adopts this on the 21st, when I print and bind these to distribute to staff and ask them to sign that they received a copy, it will be the text in front of you and those two resolutions.
So, as long as the board's comfortable with that approach, then I think we leave it at this word.
I, I would leave it. You're referencing already voted upon resolutions. It's probably cleaner than trying to regurgitate it.
I agree.
Agree.
Kristen, my next section to discuss is 406. I don't know if you have one closer.
No, I have nothing further online to discuss.
Okay. I, I, I know we had this conversation, and, and I regret not having gotten with you a little closer to talk about this. But 406 doesn't, doesn't quite match my memory. First up, by way of explanation for the purpose for the board, we used to have another class of leave under our old manual, and that was a floating holiday. And the floating holiday was created when the board of supervisors, at some point in the past, eliminated one of the paid vacation days. And so, that's why we have this odd two weeks plus one day leave for people in their first to fifth year. But I, I, I want to start, as it relates to, to the language in 406, with my, we'll, we'll, we'll start with what we're doing as a precedent. When a new employee is hired, they're given an appointment letter that describes what day they report, what their salary will be. And in that appointment letter, it references vacation days, and those vacation days are prorated from the day to hire. So, if you were hired on July 1st, you would get one half of, 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 of two weeks vacation. So, I, the, the language in here that says that the vacation is not accrued until you finish your one year of service is not, doesn't align with precedent, at least. Employees are receiving vacation on day one, but it is prorated for the remainder of the year. And, and then the second on that is that vacation accrues on the calendar year, not the, not the employee's service anniversary. So, everybody's leave clocks reset on January 1.
So, Luke, if I get that right, you're saying that one to four years, and you were hired July 1st, you would get five and a half days?
Correct.
And if you made it to the following July, then that's?
Well, no, you would get five and a half days for the remainder of the year in which you were appointed. And then on January 1, you would receive the full two weeks.
Right.
Now, so, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ken.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so, I think I'm fine with that, with the exception of, because again, I think the prorated part obviously makes sense. The only issue I have is at the, it's gonna be at the end then, when it says employee who terminates employment with the township will be paid for any earned unused vacation. My only concern is if, if you're saying then on January 1st, you get a whole new bank, I leave on January 2nd. Let's say if I used all my vacation during the prior year, and I've been here for a while, I'm now getting a whole bank of, of vacation days that's not necessarily earned. So, my only, the only concern I have here is if you have a proration on the front end, if you're not, if you're, so typically, what I've seen is you're earning and accruing throughout time, right? So, you don't get a blanket on day, on, on January 1, however, you're getting, you know, I don't know, let's just, for numbers that have nothing to do with this, let's say you're getting a day per pay period, whatever the math works out, right? And it's accruing over, you're using and accruing over time. And the primary goal for that is, is especially is, is on termination, where you have a benefit where vacation is paid out, that there's, there's this, there's this sort of blanket sort of, you know, huge payout, especially if I leave on, on January 2nd. That would be my primary concern with the current language in this.
You correctly identified a, I mean, a legitimate concern. The, 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 the calendar year lump accrual of benefits is far easy for, far easier for us to administer, but it does have shortcomings, yes. Additionally, if you consider that employees have vacation from their first day, they could still be on their probationary period, essentially fake their probationary bit, period, and then be paid for their prorated, their prorated calendar days.
Right. That was the other item I was gonna say, is typically while accrual starts early on, it's not accessible for 90 days. It's not accessible till you're completed the probationary period. Those would be my two highlight points for this area of concern.
So, I guess we need a policy decision on, do you want to follow the, the path that it's been that you are entitled to 11 days immediately? Well, after you finish your probationary period, but it, once the January 1st hits, you're, those 11 days are yours? Or do you want to have it be reworded to be that you accrue them over a course of however many days throughout the year? That's the first policy decision.
I, I would prorate it myself, because I don't think it's fair for somebody to come in a month or two and get paid 11 days.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think that's a question that, that Kristen posed. Certainly for new hires, we're talking about prorating the number of days they have in their first calendar year, although they can't use those prorated days from their hire date until they are off probation. The question is, does, does your, does your leave accrue at 1/26th? We have 26 pay periods in a year. 1/26th of your. We have 26 pay periods in a year. 1/26th of your 11 days each, each, um, uh, I don't know how to say it. Each pay period, you accrue 1/27th of your annual leave?
Yeah, Kristen, what are other townships doing?
It's across, it's different. Everyone does it differently. But I think, I think the reason why they do it, they, they switch it and go back. And I know the borough of Westchester really got burned on this because they had employees that were there for 20, 25 years and were, you know, being let go. This, not, not since COVID, this is, you know, the past couple of years situations occurred. And they were saying, well, I, I recruit all these vacation days, and if you terminate me January 5th, I was entitled to, you know, say 26 days of vacation for 2019, and I'm, I'm gonna be paid for all those. So I think when you do it on an accrual basis, then it's, it's less of an entitlement that they say that when you terminate me or when I leave voluntarily, I'm entitled to be paid for those. So I think you're in a safer position to have it be that you have to work to earn that number of days. It protects you better from a when they leave position, but as far as, you know, you're looking at different goals here. If you're looking at as, hey, I want to recruit employees, like for example, Lisa, she was a, you know, she was a great employee to recruit. And she may have been coming from somewhere where the number of vacation days to her was very important. And she wanted to know that from, from day one, she didn't have to work there a certain number of times before she was guaranteed that she was gonna have, you know, however many weeks vacation. So it depends on what you're trying to achieve. I mean, I guess you could, I guess you could, you could write it in that if they leave, then that, then I think that's a concern though. Because it becomes a, a sort of like a property right or a, a employment right that you can't take away. If you say in the manual, you're entitled to it on January 1 of this many days, and they happen to leave on June 5th, you can't say, oh, sorry, you weren't, you know, even though we told you, you had those days, now you don't.
Yeah, and, and then the, the one last complicating factor is, is if we did go to a system where, um, the, the annual leave accrued in regular intervals, um, we would need to invest in some kind of tracking software that we don't currently use. It'd get, get, get very complicated very quickly.
I, I guess, um, personally, I'm leaning towards it's an accrued, uh, earned benefit. I, I think it, it specifically addresses the, the scenario that Kristen just outlined, uh, and, and my primary concern of in early, uh, calendar year, um, um, someone leaving that could have significant payout liabilities uh, for, for the township. Um, as far as tracking, I don't think it's actually, you know, there are tons of software out there, some, um, cheaper than, than others. Um, so I think there's definitely options there. I think there are also some fairly, um, linear, um, spread, you know, Excel spreadsheets that can track this. It, it's a, like, like an amortization table, right? Um, that I think that, that could be somewhat devolved. So I think the logistics of, of managing it are, um, between one of those two options are, um, are not a concern for me here, uh, I think, because I think there is a plan that, that can address that. I would personally lean towards accruing it, uh, earned accrual over time, um, per pay period.
Jason?
I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I don't really have too much more to add. I mean.
Do you prefer it to be accrued over time or you get a lump amount as of the calendar year?
Are you talking to me or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm probably, probably not the accrual by the lump.
Okay, so Kyle, what's your preference?
Um, I was initially thinking the accrual, but, and, uh, I guess Ken, you'll have to just be the deciding factor here.
Um, no, I don't think so. I was leaning on accrual. Uh, Jason was leaning on, uh, lump sum.
All right, well, then two for the accrual then.
Okay, so I'll try to find language. I'm not sure how many you want to accrue, uh, per, I mean, I guess we'll have to figure it out with the number of total number of days that are listed here, how we accrue that. So I'll, we'll figure that out. We'll work on that.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I would appreciate if, if we could delay implementation, um, uh, until, yeah. I, I don't want it to delay you taking a vote on the 21st, but it, it is gonna take us a little while to get the ducks in the row on, on, um, how much people have in their current year. Because, uh, the accrual system, uh, uh, you know, so it, it, for, just, let's just use myself as an example. Um, I'm about to have a six-year anniversary, so I fall in the period of, of 16 days of leave. Um, the, under the, under the status quo, on January 1, my days reset. None of my days from the previous year rolled over, so I have 16 days of vacation. Um, you wouldn't want me on, in June, to start accruing additional because 16 is essentially the cap. So there, there's gonna need to be some thought on that. I, I, I appreciate the board giving us direction on which is preferred generally. I just wanted to prepare you for a little additional thought might need to be put into implementation.
Yeah, I, I agree. There's a transition, there's a transition fact, I agree. There's a transition fact that needs to be laid, layered in between because it is two different models. There may need, there may need to be a, a one-time sort of grandfather component, um, related to carryover. So, the, related to a carryover component, you know what I mean?
For simply say, effective January 1st, 2021, the vacation policy shall be as follows, and then you say for, you know,
But, but, but I think you have to allow, I think you, I, I think for that though, you have to allow, um, some, so, so typically in this accrual model, you do allow a small value of rollover because the January 1st now becomes an arbitrary date, right? Uh, because it's a, it's an accrual over time. So if I'm somebody who likes to go on vacation and go skiing in the beginning of January every year, I technically don't have any vacation beginning of January now. I, I maybe have eight hours, right? So, you know, and in your flat amount, it's not an issue, right? Because, because the employee is just, is just sort of managing it independently. Um, so, you, you know, I do think, you know, you could layer this where it's effective, um, January 1st. But then I do think that a, um, carryover of unused, um, 2020, um, time can be rolled over with a certain limit, right? You, you never do a full value carryover. Um, that's, that gets dangerous from a balance sheet perspective. But there can be some, some small amount that can carry over that helps initiate the beginning of the next year to the extent you didn't use all the time in, in 2020.
Right. So i- if we think of someone's seniority status, a lot, it, it determines not only how much they will accrue per pay period, but it also sets in this essentially a ceiling for how much they can have in their account. And so if we just began implementation next month, all those employees who, who had the, I don't know, prescience to, 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 to make their vacations earlier this year, start accruing replacement leave, whereas us suckers who didn't take leave in January are, uh, are, are basically capped at, at, at the balance we had on January 1.
Right, which is what I think the value is. I, I think to make this transition for us here, I think that's the value of delaying it till January 1. Um, and not an immediate, you know, at, at this point in time, uh, because we're in the middle of a year. The, the point though, I do think is, because today, nothing rolls over. And you don't need it to roll over because you're just simply starting fresh. However, in an accrual model, I do think you need to allow for a, a, uh, small rollover on 12/31, you know, a rollover up to a cap of X amount, um, to, to account for that.
So what, what do you feel, what do you think is a fair, um, rollover cap a week?
Uh, I mean, it seems reasonable to me. I don't know. I mean, uh, Scott, Luke, you guys, and your side? Thoughts on?
Five days would be
Right.
A good way to start.
All right, let's, let, I, I mean, I'm okay with that.
And then we have, uh, we, we, we can hammer this out. Basically, I think what, what Kristen and I needed was, was direction from the board in setting policy. These are all details that we can hammer out. But I'll, I'll throw out even one more variable. Um, and that is that a day of vacation is not the same thing to two different employees who routinely work a different length shift. So early on in this conversation, we were comparing 35-hour to 40-hour employees. So in a, in an odd way, in terms of hours, public works employees are going to accrue leave faster than, 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 than administrative employees.
So that, how that's handled is, um, no, look, I think, I think how it's handled is you, you're accrual ends up being, you don't actually accrue days, you accrue hours, right? So the, the accrual i- i- in the, I'm trying to think of how to explain it, right? So i- i- you, you're accruing at the same pace of employment, right? Well, let me think through that. Typically, I mean, right, I mean, typically how it's managed is you're, you're accruing, you're accruing hours, not days, right? So, and in order to then supplement your time during time off, you, you're applying those, those accrued hours. So if you're, if you are, are working, um, the, um, 7.5 hours a day, you need 7.5 hours of, of PTO to account for that. If you're working eight hours a day, you need eight hours of PTO.
I suggest that I need to look at example manuals where they do it as an accrued basis. The ones that I was looking at, the one that Michael provided, has this language, so I can't really speak to mechanisms by which it, it, it works. I mean, it's not rocket, we, I'm sure we can find other examples and suggest the language to the board.
Yeah, and, and honestly, if the, the payment of essentially unearned leave at the point of termination is the, the primary reason why accrual is preferable to a lump sum, um, uh, paid time off accumulation. Is, is there not some multiplier we could apply at the point of termination that, that basically prorates unlaid, uh, your, prorates the payable leave based on your last day of employment? So, so let's say if, so again, kind of going back to the specific example of, of myself, I'm a, uh, in the, in the, in the, the three weeks range. If, if my last day of employment was in, uh, in, in June, I'd only be compensated for five twelfths of my unused vacation.
You should stick around then.
I, I think, I think it's still, I think that to the point, the question, or the item Kristen raised earlier though, it's a, uh, it's, it's a, in a, the entitlement of the benefit versus, you know, the earned benefit is, is earned of, is earned versus what you can pay out on. Um, the other issue is, in theory, you also, in that same scenario, knowing that you were gonna, to, to resign or, or, you know, you know, step away at that point, you could just bang out your 100% of your annual, um, vacation, and then, and then, and then, you know, burn it all out. And in essence, it really wasn't earned, uh, in that calendar year.
All right, Kristen, you, some other scenarios on that?
Yeah, we're gonna need to look into other examples of how it's done and, and suggest language to you.
All right, and then how would that, how would that, um, we're not gonna have to do another special meeting just for that one, will we?
No, I mean, you, when you go to adopt it, I'll, I can circulate to you in advance of your meeting, the suggested language, and then the ultimate, you know, we can have different versions that for you to consider. Um, and then if you wanted to make tweaks that night, you could, you could still adopt it with guidance on how to tweak that to the language.
Okay.
Right, so this is a public meeting. The only reason we're having it, this is a basically a, a, a meeting for just this strict purpose is to spare, frankly, to spare the public, or rather try, public policy analysis of our manual. Uh, it, it, we never contemplated you actually adopting this document today. It's just, I'm, the details.
All right, so that puts, um, there's only one or two left, isn't there?
Uh, I, I only have one more. I don't know. Kristen, did you indicate you were done?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing, I, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, uh, my one remaining is 407, personal days. Um, I, I think what makes a personal day different than a, than a paid vacation day is that vacation should be taken in hold increments. And personal is for that sort of urgent business that, that is sort of unscheduled. Got to meet the television repairman or something like that. Um, and, and therefore, I think that it should be allowed to be taken in half-days.
So you're saying you would prefer, would be two days, um, but you could do, um, half-day here, half-day there, half-day here, half-day there, that's your, your four half-days equal your two.
Right, well, I'm just talking about minimum increment of use. I, I, I wouldn't want somebody to use their vacation by leaving at noon every Friday for the whole calendar year. That, that's really not the point of vacation. Vacation is to get your, your mind off of work, take a week off and go somewhere. Whereas a personal day is very different. Um, a, a personal day is, uh, um, is exactly as I, as I mentioned, just kind of a, um, um, an emergency where you need to excuse yourself. It's not something you've worked out with your boss in advance. And so i- if it's just another day you can have off, there's really no reason to segregate personal days from vacation days. And so my recommendation is not that the total days of personal be increased, it's just that the minimum increment be reduced to a half-day. Which is the last sentence of 407.
I got you. So I don't, that, the half-day. What was that, Scott?
I said, instead of the word full, they would be taken in half-day increments.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Ken and Jason?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, there you go. Um, so then I guess it seems like the only thing we're necessarily gonna be working on, um, the most is gonna be the vacation issue.
All right.
All right. You guys okay on that then?
Yep.
Well, I guess, I don't know, Scott, if you want to chime in, or Luke, you guys had a distinction on the use of the word department head or supervisor. I can't recall where that section was, to be honest with you.
We were talking about dismissing?
No, actually, this was a conversation as it relates to, um, performance reviews. And, um, we got some earlier, early, there's been multiple iterations of, of drafts, but, um, um, a lot of, of our team got to see a draft in about September. And we got some very positive feedback, um, um, about implementing a, um, a, a routine of doing performance reviews for employees. The, the question is, is who, how do you generically reference who does a performance review for which employee? My preferred vernacular is supervisor, and Scott indicated that he preferred, uh, um, department head. And, and the only reason, um, that I prefer supervisor is because I got head. And the only reason that I prefer supervisor is because I got the org chart up here again. I'm the immediate supervisor of three employees. But strictly speaking, I'm not a department head. But I still feel like I should be responsible for those three performance reviews.
I, I, I would agree. I don't think you have the first bit of knowledge on what's going on on the public work side. So how could you go over there and start, start picking apart who's doing what? And I think Matt would be responsible for the public work side. And then you would, you would be responsible for the three underneath of you, assuming you're talking about the Niran, Lisa and Lisa. And then Scott would be responsible for doing yours. I'm assuming that's how you're envisioning this?
Right. So Scott would be responsible for, for the roadmaster and for the assistant township manager. And I would do the secretary, permits administrator, and administrative assistant.
Yeah, I, I would think that that would make the most amount of sense.
So this is section 308. Section 308 is where we use the language. Right now, it's referring to supervisor. So supervisors are responsible for conducting.
Go ahead, Kristen.
I was just gonna say, the board should just read section 308, make sure they're comfortable with the way it's worded.
My thought there was simply to avoid confusion. But if everybody agrees, in this context, supervisors mean those who are supervising other employees. I understand that now.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And maybe it's in here, I don't see it. But then I think that those reviews should then be related, relayed back to the board of supervisors. What'd you say, Kristen?
I don't think there's any specific language that says that they are provided to the board supervisors.
No, but I'm saying, I think we should put that in there because we need to, A, make sure that the reviews are getting done, and B, if, if we feel as though something needs to be addressed outside of the review itself.
We can have that.
I, I agree with Kyle.
Yeah. And it's just, as a, unrelated to the, the language that you will consider adopting on the 21st, a performance review is only as good as the inputs. And the inputs for expectations on any given employee is their job descriptions. Most of our job descriptions are updated, but not all. Certainly, the, the three individuals I supervise, I've got good job descriptions. I know that when I was hired, there was a job description created because this was a position for which there was no incumbent. But just as a, staff's gonna be tasked with developing a form to, to do the, the performance review on. And you really can't write those kinds of things until you have a good job description.
I'm noticing a message from Lisa here to know if we need her to address anything to the board for any of these subjects. Is that something that you have capability to?
I, I'm using the chat feature. I, I'm using the chat feature. We've been joined by a, a member who has not been promoted to be presenter. So it's more typical of our usual meetings. This has been more like a conference call where everybody who has been in this room has had the ability to speak. But we do have a member of the audience, and I was soliciting the member of the audience, if there is any subject that she wanted to address the board on, that, that she send me a chat.
Oh, that was from you. I'm sorry. Okay. I thought that that was from, from her. Okay.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of watching the, the attendee list on the left side and seeing if anybody joins us. So at this point, there is a member of the public in the room, and I'm soliciting them to speak.
Okay. I, I thought that that was coming direct from her. I see. Yeah. Okay. So you guys are good with this? Okay. So now I guess we're gonna move on. If everybody's ready, I'm assuming we're ready to move on. We're gonna move on to the, the property tax relief provisions. And I'll, I'll turn this over to Kristen again.
Okay. So I think I explained this, but just to reiterate, Act 15 of 2020 was adopted by the Pennsylvania legislature and signed by the governor on April 20th. One of the provisions specifically deals with real estate taxes and any taxes that the township imposes upon the assessed value of property. So for you would be your real estate tax and your fire services tax. And what the legislature did is amend the local tax collection law for purposes of just this year and only relating to COVID. Normally, you, if, every, under the local tax collection law, everybody's entitled to a 2% discount if they pay the tax bill within two months of the tax, of the date of the bill. So that period expired, you would have the ability, if you wanted to, to extend that to August 31st. Second part of the act says that if you want to waive late fees, under the current law, the way it is today, you're, you would be penalized and you would have to pay a 10% penalty if you don't pay the bill within four months of the date of the bill, which is July 31st. So the act allows you, if you want, to waive late fees as long as the tax bill is paid by December 31st, 2020. The law says, Act 15 says that in order to exercise that option to waive the late fees, you would have to enact a resolution, and that resolution must be provided to your tax collector by May 20th. So I think just through the email exchange, there was, your tax collector indicated that the majority of your taxes have really already been paid, didn't see a real need to extend the 2% discount period. And as far as the delinquencies, that's really just a board decision on whether you want to waive the penalty, provided they pay by December 31st. And that would include, that would include, you know, you're, you're, you do have one tax bill that goes out, that's your real estate tax and your fire services tax. On that bill, you put your trash fee and your sewer fee, but those fees are separate and apart from the local tax collection law and the procedures that the state, you know, dictates. If you wanted to waive late fees on those separate user fees, you could do that. I don't think, if you wanted to pass a resolution to that effect, you could. Or if you just wanted to do it on an ad hoc basis, as property owners come in with, you know, specific hardship, you could do it that way.
I kind of, I kind of, from what I remember in the tax collector's email, that I kind of liked the ad hoc solution where he is able to address them as they, as they, they come to him. Right now, again, I think you stated that majority of the taxes have already been paid. And, I mean, that's my, my two cents. Ken, Jason, you guys have anything?
Wait, let me jump in because I want to be clear. I don't believe that under the law, because the way the local tax collection law is worded, it's a shall. So you shall be imposed a penalty of 10%. So I don't think you can handle the real estate tax part of it as of ad hoc, you know, see it, see as you go. I think that the law, and that's why they passed this law. They didn't want municipalities, because the law is worded shall, they don't want municipalities to just do their own thing. If you're gonna, if you're gonna waive it, you're gonna waive it through the resolution. The user fees, because those are established by your own ordinances. They're not mandated by a process by the state law. You, you get to establish the process by which you collect your trash fee and your, and your recycling and refuse fee. So those user fees, if you want to do it on an ad hoc, you can. But for taxes, I think you have to make a decision one way or the other. Are you gonna waive it? Are you gonna waive the collection of the penalty as long as they're paid by December 31st? Or are you gonna not waive it and they, they shall then be imposed that penalty?
Just, just, who, who, who is responsible for that, for that, that fee if it weren't? Tax collector, right?
Who's responsible for what? Say it again.
Collecting that fee if it wasn't waived, the tax collector, correct?
Yeah. So, so he puts that, so he described his lien process. So if it's not paid, the real estate tax bill and the fire services tax are not paid within the four months after the bill goes out, he starts a lien process as of, I can't remember if it was July, I think it was July 1, it might have been August 1. And he puts onto the bill then, that 10% penalty. So he adds that on if it's not paid within that four-month timeframe. And then it just gets collected. You know, what he does is he sends them a letter and says, oh, you didn't, you know, you're late, you didn't pay your bill. So now you get the 10% penalty added on. And then if they don't pay again, he filed, we file a lien against the property. And then you add the attorney's fees and the cost of filing the lien. So it really would just delay pretty much the lien process, which I'm not that concerned about. It's a little confusing, the way, it's called the municipal tax and lien law. And what it says is that as of the date of the bill and as of the date of providing the service, there is a lien, a statutory lien against the property. The actual filing of the lien with the person on it serves as public notice to everybody else out there. So if somebody's property's being sold, it's, it's good to have that lien filed of record so that somebody doing a search sees that there's taxes owed or refuse bills owed. So
Okay.
They wouldn't have a 10% penalty added if they pay it anytime in 2020, if you pass the resolution. If, you know, come January 1, what happens is, he has to turn all the unpaid taxes over to the Tax Claim Bureau. And that's the other reason why you need this resolution in place, because it's, as of December 31, your tax collector has no authority to collect the tax anymore. The Tax Claim Bureau is the only entity that can collect the tax as of January 1, 2021. And they need to know whether as of that date, they have to add that 10% penalty or not.
All right. So Ken, Jason?
Kristen, one question related to this. This Act 15, that was applied, does it allow for augmentation of those dates, or i.e. somewhere in the middle? I think during this time period, it's, so, okay, good. Because I, I think from my perspective, during this time period, you know, as Dennis suggested, you know, our collection, our collection rates this year versus prior years are, are very good. It's, it's better than they really have ever been. As of the date he ran the report, we're at 93%, just about 93% paid. The, as far as the discount period, that was due 430. So, you know, we're well beyond that. So I don't necessarily see value in extending from that. However, for the 7% of folks that haven't paid yet, you know, you know, they're, if, if they are struggling, it does seem like something that our, our residents would, would benefit from, that's something we could afford. However, the one caution I would throw out there is, you know, as a municipality, I think we really want our taxes collected before we get too far into the budget process. So we have a sense of knowing where we are. And as we start the budgeting process, which we really, you know, get, get, get started by like beginning of August. So, you know, preferably, I would see somewhere in the middle, definitely nothing that's exceeding to the end of the year. Because I think it just makes it too hard for us to manage our budgeting process and be able to forecast what our revenues are, especially for the end of this year, recognizing with unemployment, the earned income tax is going to be reduced. However, I, I would see, you know, if it's not a significant burden or logistic sort of nightmare or cost to, to extend it, the penalty period briefly, I would see that as a value.
Jason? We lose him?
So, no, I'm here. The, I agree with Ken. I think, you know, that's what I was kind of saying earlier. But I do think, though, that the amount of, that you're talking about a 10%, you know, penalty fee, I don't, I think we can waive that because we're not waiving the fact that they're not, they don't have to pay the taxes, because that's gonna happen anyway. One way or the other, it's gonna be out of our hands. So at least we can help out by at least waiving our 10% to keep it, to keep the paperwork. I would think it'd be easier, more, a little more simple.
So, so Ken, were you thinking more in line with August, September, September, October?
I mean, in my head, I was thinking, you know, currently, the penalty period initiates after 6:30. A, a date in my head I was thinking was 8/31. Again, we want to try and afford residents some, some, some leniency during this time period. But by the time we get into September, we're, we're really crunching numbers. And we really do want to encourage the majority to have been paid by then.
All right. I, I, I like the idea of August 31st, because I do know September, October is when the budget process is taking place. So do you, you guys okay with changing it to, to August 31st?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what it will be.
So you should, you have to actually, somebody has to make a motion. I just changed it. I'll send it over to Scott and Luke. But somebody has to make a motion in a second and adopt the resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 11 of 2020, implementing Act 15 of 2020 to waive late fees and penalties up to August 31st, 2019, for the 2020 year, for property tax of collections.
Just to clarify, you said August 31st, 2019. I know you meant August 31st, 2020. And I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, 2020.
All right. And I'll second that.
I'm thinking ahead of the year. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I believe that we've given our viewers an option to, okay, we got one coming in right now. What about the discount? Will that be extended to 8/31 is the question? So, so, so I think that we were going to, Kristen?
Yeah, no, you guys had decided that was not, you were not going to do that. That the majority, based on the information you received from your tax collector, the majority of the taxes have already been paid, and there wasn't much benefit to extending that.
Yeah. And, and again, he, the, the tax collector, I think, is going to be making phone calls and working with the people as, as, as he runs into this.
Yeah. He indicated in his email to you that you've collected 92.1% of the 2020 budget. So you're talking about, you know, a very small percentage that, that you don't have, haven't collected yet.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, more specifically, we identified 285 unpaid parcels. So I know he's still continuing to work with those. It just provides leniency. I mean, when we look at the average tax bill of 74251, we're talking about, you know, by giving folks a little bit of a breather, you know, saves that group of folks that are going through a hard time that need the breather about 75 bucks. So.
Okay. So public comment on agenda items? Are there any other public comment on agenda items?
Well, there's only one member of the public in the room, and, and we just read her question aloud. So the answer is no.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.